We will call the meeting to order. This is the May 20, 12, 2020, meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. We would like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks so much. Our mission statement at Columbia Heights Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we'll move on now to the agenda approval and adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Hey, Natty, do you want to do a roll call first?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. Yeah, Molly, are you out there?
I am.
I bumped right over roll call. It's gonna be fun again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're kind of digitalized, but let's do it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Samurai.
Here.
Clarkin.
Here.
Lewis. Here. Superintendent Kathy Kelly.
Here.
All right.
Natty, do you want to read your statement?
Oh, yes, thank you, Kathy. Oh, my gosh, remember when I was just saying right before this that I had this all nailed? All right, I would like to kind of begin our meeting here before we approve the agenda by saying, due to the current federal and emergency state declarations, Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay Home, and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, the meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they're not speaking. Chairboard or school board members wishing to speak should raise their hand then wait to be recognized by Chair. And Laura, since you are not on video, to just state that you'd like to be heard. The Chair will determine the order in which the board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting will be recorded and access to the recording will be available on the school district website as soon as reasonably possible. Thanks for helping me through this, everyone. We'll get used to it if this continues. So how about now, unless I'm missing something else, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
John?
Yep.
Yep. Wells, a second?
Second.
Laura. Thank you, Laura. All right, any discussion on that? All right, hearing none. Molly, would you again do a roll call vote, please?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Clarkin.
All right.
Lewis. Aye.
All right, motion carries. Great, the announcements for this week. On May 19th at 5:30 PM, there'll be a school board work session in the community room. On May 25th, Monday, there will be no school for the Memorial Day holiday. On May 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting in the community room. On May 28th, Thursday, is the last day of school for students. And on June 9th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's another regular school board meeting in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
All right, thank you. And we're gonna do communication to the board. At this time, any citizens or employees may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and, if desired, request that administration follow up. The board will not take action in this meeting or request presented at this time. For those of you down at the district center, are we seeing anyone who was wishing to speak to the board?
Madam Chair, there's no members of the community here to speak to the board this evening.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being down there, on their behalf as well and ours. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and the minutes of the April 14th and 28th regular school board meetings. Can I have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lorian, a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Molly.
Okay.
We'll call it a computer delay. All right, so any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's do another roll call.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
The Samurai. Clarkin.
All right.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We will move on to discussion reports and information items. We'll take some time now to hear reports from the members of the board. Boards, board members will report on board activities since the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Let's see, we're just gonna go in the order I find you on my screen, John?
The only thing I have to report, I guess, is several conversations with mostly parents, kind of questions about where we're headed, and I know that there's some conversations on our agenda tonight, so. But just talking with parents with lots of questions.
Yep. Thank you, John. Moving, moving, moving. Lorian?
Yeah, same as John, just have been having some conversations with parents and community members.
All right. Molly?
Same thing, community members, parents, and some students.
All right.
Thank you.
Paula?
Yep, same thing, parents, mostly, yeah, parents and students.
Yep. And Laura?
Well, I actually did attend the Northeast Metro 916 monthly meeting that was done Google Meet and by phone. I will say that I definitely, as far as ease, the Zoom is definitely a lot easier to go with than the phone calls with 13 members, all having to do roll call votes. And most of the, most of the stuff that we covered was, you know, your basic end-of-the-year business. But there was one interesting thing that, that we were doing. We did get a presentation on and we moved to do a classification and compensation study. And that was with regards to making sure that our jobs were being listed with the, the, the actual duties and making sure that the compensation aligned with basically the market standards. So that's very interesting. At this point right now, we're gonna be going with the band method. We had a number of different methods that were presented to us, but that one seemed to be the one that was most easily transferable to the school district setting. And I look forward to reporting on that as soon as we get more, more information going forward. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. As for me, similar to other folks, lots of conversations, mostly with parents about the situation that we're all in right now. I did, with Lorian, attend the chair meeting just prior to this meeting. And I also, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, had their first virtual Zoom meeting, and so I was able to attend that via Zoom, where we got to hear from the Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Education. I had some conversations about equity and reimagining Minnesota. But if you guys saw on your board packet, there was some interesting material. If you haven't taken a glance or a good look at it yet, it talked about kind of school districts prioritizing and the impact of COVID-19, and I thought was very interesting. So take a look at that in terms of like financial strain and other things that are happening on school districts. So encourage you to read that if you didn't get a chance to thoroughly read it yet. All right, Superintendent Kelly, do you have an update for this evening?
Madam Chair and members, I do, I have a short one. District and Building Administration has been working on staffing, on distance learning, end-of-year activities, and future planning. Administration is also beginning to forecast what summer school and the start of the school year might look like for 2020, 21. But we are still waiting for guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health. So we can plan, but we really can't implement or execute anything until we are aware from the Department of Health what the virus is doing and what MDE is allowing school districts to do. I do want to give a shout out to Columbia Heights Public School staff that served 1,393 meals today to our students. And then we had 22 students, I believe, or children in the Emergency Childcare Worker Program today. So we, those two programs are alive and well. A great deal of thanks to all the staff involved. There has been a great deal of thought and planning being put into the senior graduation of 2020, and that will be on the agenda a little later, and Principal Robuleski will be talking about that. And then a gentle reminder to board members, our next board meeting, which is scheduled to be a work study, will really be a tour of some of the construction. And in order for us to plan, if you would please RSVP by Friday, if you're planning on doing the tour, just to dawn, that would be greatly appreciated. I've had contacts with multiple board members and attended the school board chair meeting immediately preceding this school board meeting, and I want to thank all of you for your time. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We will move on now to an Avid program update with Director of Teaching and Learning Tara Tuckroll. Do you mind introducing your crew for us, Tara?
Yes, I can definitely do that. I'm gonna share my screen, and then I can introduce everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight with Emily Gartner, our Professional Development Coordinator, who's also our district lead for Avid. Amanda Jones, who is a Columbia Academy teacher, as well as a site coordinator for Avid at Columbia Academy. We're also here with Dan Ronchek, who's a Columbia Heights High School math teacher, as well as an Avid teacher at the high school. Our mission in Columbia Heights of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, courage, and innovation. Tonight is an informational update about Avid, and there are no governance recommendations to follow. So I'm gonna pass it over to Emily Gartner, who's going to introduce Avid.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We'll be telling you a little bit more about Avid, but to give you some background, Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. Avid, as a program, has been around for about 40 years. In Columbia Heights, it has been around since 2008. We started with one Avid class at the high school, and since then, it has expanded to all five of our buildings. So currently, at Columbia Heights High School, we have an Avid elective in grades nine through 12. We have eight sections of the Avid elective. And in addition to the Avid elective, all Columbia Heights High School teachers receive Avid professional development throughout the year and implement Avid strategies in their classrooms. Dan Ronchek will be telling you a little bit more about that later. At Columbia Academy, in sixth grade, Avid is school-wide, meaning that all teachers are implementing Avid strategies. And then in grades seven and eight, we have the Avid elective. And then in our elementary schools, we started at Valley View and then moved to Beattie North Park in Highland as well. And Avid is now in grades K-5 in all three of our elementaries. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Amanda Jones to tell you about Avid at CA.
Good evening, Chair Severson, school board members, and Superintendent Kelly. Good to see all of you from afar. So our update for this school year, we, as, as she just said, we have four sections at the middle school, two in seventh, two in eighth, and we have a total of 118 students enrolled in Avid currently at Columbia Academy. I'm happy to say that our site, our site team is very strong and continues to grow with a lot of really dynamic supportive teachers. And I'm happy to say too that our school in the Columbia Heights District was, we had the highest number of attendees in the district at the North Suburban Avid Conference this past summer, a very large group from our school. Recently, the state competition for History Day took place, and we had three of our Avid students that were in that History Day competition. And I'm happy to say that two of our eighth graders received an honorable mention in state this year, so that was very exciting. I have been doing lunchtime tutoring, after-school tutoring with the students. And this year, I added Avid Club after school through the Encore program, and that is open to all students, not just Avid students. So we had quite a few students who were interested in Avid and interested in getting some additional help. And I think we recruited a few through that as well, so that was really fun to work with the kids after school. With all of the craziness of coronavirus and trying to figure out data and stuff, I do have first quarter data. 73% of our Avid students were on the honor roll during first quarter. And then 58% of our students were invited in February to CA's annual academic night. So I'm very proud of those numbers this year. And then we did take quite a few field trips this year. My eighth grade group did miss out on a field trip last year, and so they had the opportunity to go on two, one at St. Thomas and one at my alma mater, St. Olaf. So that was really fun. That's where my teaching career began, and so it kind of came full circle for me that day. I also want to just make a note too, at that field trip, we were complimented highly by the staff at St. Olaf. They said that they couldn't believe that our kids were eighth graders, that they've had, you know, they were more well-behaved than some older students that have attended these field trips, and they just were really pleased with their questions and how they carried themselves. So I was really, really proud of that field trip. We also took the seventh grade students to a programming and tour at Bethel University as well. We continue to grow our Avid professional development at CA. It was really embedded in a lot of what we did at our staff meetings and obviously throughout the district. We, as you can see, worked in a staff meeting there, the picture on the left. And then the picture on the right is a picture of our actual science team at CA that was working at the North Suburban Conference this past summer, planning using Avid strategies. And then finally, our tutorials, you know, in spite of not having very many tutors, we, we have really great Avid tutorials going on. I was really impressed with our seventh graders this year, how quickly they kind of latched on to how to use the tutorials. And I do, and that is not a typo that says Avid tutor, because we had one very loyal tutor come to us from the University of Minnesota, who I wanted to give a quick shout out to, and just so you guys know, Alex Herlowski had come to us as a student that came to get some hours for some pre-student teaching, and we ended up hiring him halfway through the year, and he's just been amazing. He's even doing tutoring via Zoom with me and is supporting our students from a distance and has just been outstanding and has went on all the field trips with us. And so I'm very grateful for him this year and all the work he's put in with our middle school students. And that's all I have for CA. I'm just really excited to continue building the program and really enjoy my work every year with the kids.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have Dan Ronchek, who is a high school teacher, and he will be telling us about Avid at Columbia Heights High School.
Hello, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Kelly. This first slide is about how our large site team at Columbia Heights, it's another large year for us. We started a new program with it last year, and it's, and it worked really well, and we were excited to have it again this year. We've been integrating the school's leadership team, the department leaders, with the Avid site team, so that we have over 20 CHS staff members in that site team, and it's a great way that we can get multiple perspectives on the things that we're looking at. We continue to work on focus note-taking process, which I'm gonna have some more details about a little bit later. Our juniors and seniors, their favorite part of the year, their cool trip to go to, is the National College Fair. You'll see that in a little bit. And also college visits to the University of Minnesota, Mankato State University, Dunwoody, and virtual college visits. I did one with my seniors as well, where they were able to use the Google Pro or whatever, so they could virtually tour a college over the past couple of years. So all of our Avid students are enrolled in advanced courses. That's either AP or ARCC courses, so that they're getting either college credit or taking that AP test right now to hopefully get college credit as well. We also do a really cool eight-week e-Mentor program with Medtronic that Avid juniors do, so they can get in contact with an adult and talk to them about how their professional growth, how they got into the career that they have. We do hundreds of community service hours, PSAT, SAT, and AP prep to make sure that we are encouraging students to take these tests, but also that they can be successful in those tests as well. I do a lot of FAFSA support with the Avid seniors to make sure that they can appropriately fill out that big old tax document, so they can get some of them sweet, sweet college monies and pay for college once they're there. One of the big strengths I feel about Avid is we do a lot of work to make sure that they're successful in high school, but also making sure that they're gonna be successful once they reach college. We have a partnership with U of M and Bethel for those same Avid tutors. We had the same one that Amanda mentioned. I think you probably, yeah, hundreds of college and scholarship applications. I got my cool number, like I do every year. And my favorite part of the year is having former Avid students come back as tutors and guest speakers. So this is our tutorial process. Our tutorial room's a little bit smaller this year, but it's still just as good. We have the same whiteboards where students are able to sit and discuss. I'm continually impressed and excited about how well students are able to work together to solve their problems. We've also been doing more partnership, especially at the ninth grade level of, with Khan Academy, to get students ready for their SAT and practicing. We bring in guest speakers, and yeah, I think that's about it for that one. This is my favorite part of the year, when we have our Avid seniors come back. We had four Avid seniors come back. They talked to the ninth graders, they talked to the juniors, and they talked to current seniors. Gabby, as you can see, she was the one that came to the school board last year, and so I was really excited to have her back. It's, it's something I look forward to every year, to hear how the first semester of college has gone for them. And it's a really exciting day that students are able to hear from people that were in their own shoes. Again, we also do a lot of site teamwork. This is one of our Avid site team meetings where we have members from department leaders coming together to talk about different issues, about where our school is strong and where we might be weak, and what areas we want to develop in our PLC work, and how do we want to improve our schools. One of the coolest discussions that we had this year was about the focused note-taking process. So we had each department bring in notes that they had been taking in their classroom, and we broke down the different process of like taking their notes, processing their notes, and analyzing that, thinking that note-taking is not a one-time process. It's something that happens multiple times that you go back to. So this was a big push that we did this year, especially after our push. So I have a bunch of math examples. So this is intermediate and advanced algebra. So this is the initial stage of their taking their notes. They took their notes in class. And then the next slide, they go back to their notes and add additional information. Where are the holes in the information? And where do they need to add stuff? What did they miss the first time around? Yeah. This is that exciting college fair where we go to see different colleges. For the juniors, it's getting that initial contract, contact, and figuring out, okay, what are some colleges I might be interested in? With my seniors, it's where they're able to like go to their college reps and say, okay, I've been working on your application, I need this, this, and this figured out. We have good plans for what we've gotta do. We also have this cool wall where we keep track of all the acceptances that happen throughout the school, which is right outside our media center. This is that professional relationship with Medtronic. They send several emails back and forth throughout the school year. And then it ends with them actually going and meeting that person that they've been emailing back and forth for the past few months. Not sure how that went this year. So we had 47 Avid seniors. At the time that I sent this out, it was 118 college acceptance letters from our 47 seniors. It's actually probably a little bit higher than that, closer to 130. And also 147, my favorite number of the year is the next slide, is we applied, we applied for $1.25 million in scholarships. This does not include the local scholarship, and it also does not include FAFSA or Dream Act. So this number is only gonna get bigger. It's a fun number that I like to put together at the end of the year. Some other celebrations, we've got some other ones. Nationally, 39% of the class of 2019 took at least one AP exam. Of our Avid seniors, 88% of them took at least one AP exam. Some of them are taking ARC instead, ARCC instead. Also, 94% of our Avid seniors meet four-year college entry requirements right now, and 91% of them are taking that, that's where you can see that 91%, where they're taking the ARCC courses instead of AP. I think that's it for me. These are my Avid seniors. I'm excited to send them off in a couple of weeks. They've been great fun to work with. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? I was just gonna ask that, thank you, Tara. Any questions? Looking for raised hands. All right, well, thank you so much for the whole team for coming tonight. It was nice to meet a few new faces and see you guys at the meeting. Thank you again for your time. If you, I think if your supervisor says you can audios from this meeting, it's not, it's not rude to leave the Zoom meeting. These can get lost, unless you're super interested in the happenings of a school board for your future admin license, right, Superintendent Kelly? All right, goodbye.
Good night, thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on to the update about Blooming Heights, and I would like to welcome Kristin Stunkel up, our Director of Community Education and Communication. Kristin, could you introduce the people you brought with you tonight?
Yes. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm happy to be here this evening with Wes Nutrin, who is our Agriculture Specialist. And we're providing this evening the Blooming Heights Program Update. Our mission for the school district is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every student. All belong, all succeed. And in this evening's presentation, the core values of community, collaboration, respect, and innovation will be discussed. And before I hand it over to Wes, I just want to thank all of the school board members and Superintendent Kelly for the vision and the support of this program over these 10 years. One of the remarkable things about doing a program like this over 10 years is that the students, the children, get to experience Blooming Heights at various developmental stages and with different programs. So we have children that were in Blooming Heights in early childhood programs or Summer Adventure Club, who are then in high school classes in Blooming Heights. And so that's a really unique classroom, because most classrooms a student doesn't experience over all of their years. So I just wanted to share that. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Wes.
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Wes Nutrin, and while I began my role as egg specialist in June of 2019, this may be my first opportunity to introduce myself to the school board. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. So I'm a farm kid. I was raising a farm in South Dakota. My family raised corn and soybeans, and we raised cattle and sheep and pigs. So I kind of, you know, grew a love of being outside and of agriculture and nature and plants. And that inspired me to go to school for Plant and Soil Science at South Dakota State University. And after leaving college, I started my career. I worked as a soil scientist for a while, and then later on, worked as a naturalist, and later as a teacher at Dodge Nature Preschool, working in early childhood. So I kind of started out more in the industrial, like, science realm and shifted more toward education and really learned that what I really love doing is merging that love of plants and gardening and nature along with education. I really find that I'm able to do that at Blooming Heights, so I'm really, I feel really fortunate to be in this position. And personally, I guess, I'm married and my- and my wife and I just had a baby in late February. So we are taking care of a newborn these days and love gardening and foraging and cooking and working on our house. Moving on, I just wanted to state our Blooming Heights mission. This, the mission and the guiding principles for Blooming Heights were put together by Maya Lemon, who was my predecessor. So Blooming Heights is a Columbia Heights Public Schools program that uses school garden and nutrition programming to facilitate equitable experiences that engage all the senses while building the skills and knowledge necessary for cultivating a healthy life planet. And we have our guiding principles listed here. I'm not going to read through these. I just want to read the first one because I'm going to be making reference to that. "We are committed to hands-on teaching and learning that highlights beauty, wonder, and joy, and encourages positive risk-taking." So just a little program overview, things I want to talk about tonight. First off, the 2019 summer programs. I'll just mention that this past summer, one of the things that we do is have our farm stand outside of the district center on Wednesdays in the summer. And we raised over $300 in money from those farm stand sales. So that was great for those kids to be involved in that. We also were able to donate over 300 pounds of produce to either SECA or the school cafeterias or to the high school fax classroom. As far as programming goes, for the 2019-2020 school year, we were able to teach Blooming Heights program to 151 different classes, unique classes of students. Also taught some Columbia Heights High School Encore programs that we'll talk about. And I want to spend a little time talking about on our, Blooming Heights is 2020 Distance Learning Focus. So starting out, summer 2019, there's a list of things that happened this past summer. One that I want to talk a little bit about is Adventure Club. So that's our summer childcare program. Well, year-round child program, childcare program, but in the summer, they spend a good amount of time out at Blooming Heights. Weekly garden lessons, weekly cooking lessons, helping in the garden in small groups. And that's the group of kids who helped put on the farm stand that I mentioned earlier. We also had Mini Adventures, which is the early childhood childcare program, Glitter Bugs, that is the Columbia Heights Rec Department program of early childhood kiddos who've come over for garden lessons. Taught a writing workshop for summer seminar and did some professional development as well. So school year programs for early childhood, that's the pre-K, ECFE, Mini Adventures mostly. Taught a variety of different programs, ranging from worms to seeds to making smoothies out of fresh fruits and vegetables. The one I want to talk a little bit more about is apple cider pressing. So in the first slide where I was introducing myself, it showed the apple press that I had set up for this. And this slide shows some ECFE kids picking some apples. So they were able to pick the apples, bring them over, and wash those apples, and listen to the program, and take some positive risks in leaving their parents and bringing that apple up and putting it into the grinder, so we could grind it up and put it in the press and make juice that they all got to taste. So this was a very hands-on, immersive experience that we were able to provide for a lot of different of the year, early childhood programs, pre-K, ECFE, and Mini Adventures all took place in the apple pressing. So moving on to school year programs, this is for elementary. So we at Blooming Heights try to align all of our lessons to pre-K through five educational standards. A lot of those lessons are grade-level garden field trips during the nicer months, and those are focused on hands-on lessons in the garden. Oftentimes, the science specialists will bring their kids out to the garden for lessons. I'll go over to North Park's Courtyard Garden to teach. And during the winter months and the fall, when the garden's dormant, Blooming Heights teaches American Indian lessons aligned with standards in all of the elementary classrooms. So a little, something I want to focus on on this slide, you can see the picture there. That's the lid of one of the vermicomposting or worm bins. That's at the North Park Courtyard Garden. So a good example of positive risk-taking here, where the kids are, each of their bowls has some worms in it, and they're exploring those worms, touching those worms. Also, some social emotional development going on with growing that empathy for those worms and learning that they're living organisms that we need to take care of them. Moving on to our next slide here. This is school year programs for high school and Columbia Academy. So I've got a list here of programs that we did this year. I'm not going to read all of these off. I just want to highlight one in particular. Well, we've been trying to forge new relationships with teachers and for high school ceramics, a new teacher there, Michelle Dietz, and I had talked about wanting to get her classroom out in the garden. So we hatched a plan to get her students out and dig a hole in the dirt, and we dug until we could find clay. And we brought that clay out and talked about how that's our main ingredient in making ceramics. And you can see in that photo, that group of kids, they each have a cup, and that's got some clay that they dug out of the garden. And they brought that clay back into the classroom, and they were able to refine it and get all the organic material out of it and use it to make pottery. So that picture below there, those are pinch pots that were made by some of the students in the high school ceramics class. So moving on to the next slide. Encore classes for Columbia Heights High School. There's the youth teaching youth, which is in coordination with 4H. That happens in the fall. I want to focus a little bit more on Seed to Plate, which is our winter Encore program. And with this one, this year, we tried to focus a little bit more on that seed part of it. We started some seeds in the classroom in our grow lab or our grow tower. We started some onions that will be planted in the schoolyard garden this spring. We grew some mushrooms, some oyster mushrooms in the classroom. And we also seeded our tower garden, which is an aquaponic setup to grow lettuce and basil. So we were able to grow some things and also make some food in that class and really responded to some of the desires of the students and the foods that they wanted to make. That photo, you can see there, that was the last class, and we made sambusa, and the kids were really excited to make that. And when we were making it, the smell of the sambusa just drifted down the hallways. We actually had a few people pop their head in the door of the classroom and wonder what we were making because it smells so good. So a great experience for them. And lastly, we started a new Encore program this spring called Outdoor Club. I did that in, along with Ms. Cinni Carriello. Unfortunately, we were only able to hold three classes before we started distance learning. So hopefully, we're able to pick that up again once things get back to normal. We also have some community ed programs that we offer through Blooming Heights. We did a fermentation class this winter that got really good reviews from the students. We're planning on a wildflower and tree identification class at Cordyceae Park, which will now hopefully be virtual instead of in-person. And we unfortunately had to postpone our Metro North AVE annual visit because of social distancing. Moving on, a big focus now has been distance learning. So this has been something we've really had to adapt to. Blooming Heights being a very hands-on place, we had to kind of put our heads together and figure out, how are we going to do this? So the idea we had is that we'll do our best to support educators and support families through this with the resources we have at Blooming Heights. So the idea was to create a YouTube channel to explore different garden, nature, and food and nutritional concepts and make educational videos out of that. Also, making some read-alouds of garden and nature-related children's books. So this was really born out of that desire to help teachers and families through this difficult time of distance learning. So you can see the YouTube address referenced underneath the screen there. That's a video about container gardening that I made. So that should be in the, if you reference that with, through the video, you should be able to find that YouTube channel. They don't make those addresses easy to just remember. It's a long character string there. But so one thing that we wanted to do is make these videos personalized and local. You know, the teachers can reference lots of different YouTube videos online, but if we're making that relevant, the teacher, the students see a familiar face, it's relevant to our experience at Columbia Heights. We thought we could make that all the better. So some of the videos that we have up there, we do some Blooming Heights garden updates following different signs of spring, as all the garden plants are waking up. There's a series called Let's Take a Closer Look, which are really short, like two to three-minute videos, which are helpful for the teachers to be able to input in their lesson plans. And that's just kind of looking at a plant, taking a closer look, talking about, a little bit about the science behind it to learn about that, whatever we're taking a look at. Container gardening, making homemade broth, a video about growing mushrooms at home, tapping a maple tree and maybe making maple sugar. These are just a few examples of the videos that I've got out there or that we've got out there for Blooming Heights. And then we've got a lot of great teacher feedback. And based on that teacher feedback, decided to make some custom videos for teachers as well. So I'll highlight for the elementary science specialists. They were teaching a simple machines lesson, and they requested that I do a video about how garden tools can become simple machines. So we did that, and I'm hoping those lessons go very well for them. Also, Stan Maraz, the science specialist at North Park, has been using the videos. He's been assigning his students to just watch, look through the descriptions of the videos, pick one that they like that they want to watch, and they watch it, and they make observations about it, and they report that back as scientists to Mr. Maraz. And that's been going very well also. So one other thing I wanted to mention is that these videos, we're doing this specifically for distance learning. But when things get back to normal again, these videos will still be out there. And there's a whole library of videos that are there that educators and families can reference in the future as well. So it's been a fun experience. Moving on, this summer, we're in the process, well, right now, we're in the process of hiring for summer, high school summer assistants to help grow, maintain, and harvest the garden. Assist with summer programming. We're, you know, staying really flexible with that. We don't know what the summer is going to bring in terms of our ability to have groups out in the garden. These summer assistants will undertake an independent special project. And we're going to learn a lot about career possibilities and different ways that they can plug into agriculture and gardening along the way. And through it all, we'll comply with all the social distancing and COVID-19 guidance. And our focus is really going to be on keeping all those students safe. And lastly, I just want to thank you all for supporting Blooming Heights for these past 10 years and say that I'm just really proud to be a part of this program. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you so much, Wes. Congratulations on your new little one. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment or kind of a long statement. Well, we have been 10 years into Blooming Heights, and it was incredibly exciting to see it from the very beginning and all the hard work that went to putting that that outdoor classroom into, into reality. And, you know, the support of the staff, the community, even the county was, was very supportive. But I'm incredibly impressed with just how far that this concept has gone. It really seems to be taking off in more directions than I think we could even, even have dreamed of when it first began as, as, as a vision. I'm also very excited about the YouTube channel and all of the, all of the great work that's gone into that. And I'd actually like to see that hopefully be able to be even continued even after the pandemic. I think that's a, that's a really good, really good takeaway that will just provide, you know, so much. I, it's, it's, it's great. It really is. And thank you so much for all the hard work that you've been doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to jump on that and just reiterate. Fantastic job on adapting to the situation and trying to find ways that really connect with students. And I mean, you're talking about elementary school students who are going to be complete, like, we talked about digital natives, right? And those children, these, they're, I don't know what this next generation is. They're just going to be, they got little processors in there. And so that's, that's pretty great. Do you guys know if there's a link that people, if they, they didn't quite grab that large, awkward YouTube URL? Is that linked somewhere, like in the district website, that people can access? Kristin, you're muted if you're...
I think, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So yes, it's on our distance learning page, and we'll make sure that it's prominently noted. And, and then I also wanted to mention that we were supposed to be doing our garden party celebrating 10 years in, in a couple of weeks. But alas, we have to postpone that. We'll be doing that in the fall and looking forward to celebrating with everybody in the garden then. Wes, is there anything that you'd want to add about finding the YouTube channel?
Yeah, so on the district website, if you, I guess there's a teacher corner that has all the videos linked there. And you could also just search my name. Just the nature of YouTube, I couldn't call it the Blooming Heights channel. I had to, it had, since my name is linked to the Columbia Heights Apps, Google address, the channel has to be under my name. But if you search my name, that YouTube channel will come up as well.
Any other questions from board members? All right, well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. And all the hard work you're doing there. We're going to move on to the 2020-2021, what's tough to say, budget with Director of Finance Denise Sunstrom.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sieverson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to present the preliminary budget for 2021. And this is discussion only tonight. I would, I'll be back next board meeting to ask for approval. Our mission at Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. The core values tonight are integrity and courage. So looking at the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget assumptions, these assumptions were presented to the board on January 27th. And they're the same ones, but I'm going to go over these. There's a few pages of them. The budget and enrollment that we're using is 3,180. Our current enrollment is 3,230, so that's 50 less than our current enrollment. Our elementary enrollment may continue to decline. That is why we went down 50. Secondary enrollment remains stable. High school, grade 10, remains closed to open enrollment. Columbia Academy, all grades remain closed to open enrollment. Class sizes are maintained at an average of 24 to 1. Elementary and 30 to 1 secondary. Revenues in the areas of integration, entitlement grants, compensatory are continuing to decline because, due to frame-reduced applications not being filled out every year. Stable revenue for gifted and talented aid. We're assuming that the special ed cross-subsidy will decrease a little bit due to new aid, but it remains a substantial cost. Salary and benefit costs for settled contracts are input as actual. TRA increases 0.21 of a percent. We're assuming there will be faculty and staff retirements. We're assuming that healthcare costs will increase between 3% to 6%. We assume that activity levels and practices will remain as approved by the board. Transportation costs will increase 3% per the contract that we have. DSEG aid may decline significantly. General ed formula increases 2%. Possible limited expansion of... Possible limited expansion of some elementary programs. And there's set aside revenue for North Park Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee Implementation Plan. So those were the assumptions that were in January of 20, January 27th, and then we adopted the budget, the revised budget on March 24th. And then, right after we did the revised budget, then the COVID, we were right in the middle of the beginning of COVID. So since those budget assumptions, we had to adjust our goal. Our budget was needing adjustments of $950,000, but due to the additional expenses of the COVID-19 pandemic, we're estimating that another $300,000 was spent on these expenditures. That's not limited to childcare expenses, with no fees. We had to do the emergency care with no fees being collected. We had increase in cleaning supplies and equipment for the custodial staff to continue to clean. Interpretation and translation services increased when we went to distance learning, and there was a lot of material that had to be bought for distance learning, postage, and other things. So that then adjusted our budget, we were going to adjust 950, so we had to do really 1,250. And that we got real close, we were at 1,233,000 that we came up with in budget adjustments. So can we see, okay, how's it look up there? My screen's got all kinds of stuff in it. So here is the FY 2021 preliminary budget overview. So the first column, the projected June 2020 fund balance, that is the revised budget that you adopted in March. So that's pretty close. I'm not feeling, well, I know that the community ed balance is not going to be that 391,106, it has a star next to it, and that is due to the fact that we're, you know, still operating community ed and required to operate the childcare, and we're not getting any fees or reimbursement. So Kristin and I have been looking at it, and we're thinking it will be somewhere between 20,000 and 50,000 will be the balance, not 391,000. So that's the only one in that column that I don't think we're going to hit. Then when I go to the next column, the revenue, looking at the general fund, we are budgeting for 2021, $50,753,895 in revenue. The expenditure is $51,501,741, and that's causing still a change in fund balance of a negative 747,846. This is, this does include all of our adjustments have been put in here. So our projected fund balance at the end is 3,222,356. And on the next slide, I'll show you the fund balance percentage that that's projecting. The food service fund should be close on the beginning balance. It might be a little bit off because we are feeding kids every day and not receiving the same aid as, and we're not serving as many as we were, but I'm hoping it's close. The end of the year for 2021, it's going to increase by 34,000 to 10, leaving a fund balance of 579,086 at the end in food service. Community ed is slightly, slight change in fund balance of 78,788. We will then have a projected fund balance, it'll be less than that, it'll be closer to zero, or we will be having to do some maybe adjustments or fund transfers from the general fund to help our community ed fund. The building fund is the down payment, and the tech levy fund are in this fund, and that is projected to stay the same. We spend what we get every year on, 40% goes to technology, and 60% goes to deferred maintenance of the buildings, and that was voted on by the taxpayers. The debt service fund, the next fund is what is used for paying out all of the bonds that have been issued by the taxpayers, so that fund is in balance. We levy 103% of the bond payments every year, so that always has a positive balance to it. The dental fund is a self-insured dental plan, that's where all of our claims are. We collect the premiums from the district and the employees, and then the claims are paid out of that fund. And the OPEB trust fund is what we use to pay the severance and benefits out of, and that's with Wells Fargo. So when you look at all the funds, the balance, the revenue is 59,313,782. The expenditures are 60,195,276, and our projected fund balance is going to be 9,719,691. So when I look at the fund balance policy that we have, the school board has policy number 714, we strive to keep a fund balance between 6% and 12%. And so you can see the last five years, 2017, 10.3, 2018, 11.6, 2019, 12.5, and that was the last audit. So with the revised budget that we adopted, I'm projecting, we were projecting it would be a 9.4 fund balance, and this budget that we have put together for you is a 7.8 fund balance. So we're still between the projected, but we're decreasing it pretty fast, so.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Trying to scroll through to see if your hands are up with the view of the folks. Any questions out there? If you wouldn't mind unmuting your mic and just speaking, since I can't see what's happening very well. I do have a question, and I think like a lot of questions right now, I just want to be empathetic to the fact that it's very difficult for you all to answer, or I realize you don't have any remote sense of a crystal ball. And after having listened to the deputy commissioner from the Department of Education, and kind of knowing how responsive you guys have to be to waiting for guidance from the state and federal government, I could be asking a really hard question, but maybe this is for Superintendent Kelly, because she's got her ear to the ground on these matters. But are we looking at any potential additional aid from either the state or the federal government to help augment some of the costs of childcare? I know we have the 2% from the, you know, the annual, the biennial, biennium budgets, but I'm seeing what's happening, you know, to the state budget. Kathy, do you have any light on that for us?
You know, Madam Chair, if I had a crystal ball, it would be really clear right now, but I guess the few comments that I would make is that the federal government has sent some money to each state department of education, and they will be, MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education, will be determining where that money goes, how much of it we receive, and what the focus of that money is going to be. And that would certainly help us with a little bit of relief to bridge maybe some of the gaps in the budget. So that's an unknown now, but it should be coming in. That'll be up to MDE. The other, the other things when we look at it, we don't know what the legislature will do the following year. When you look at where the state's budget is, they're saying that their rainy day fund is done, and that they are losing money from the taxes as far as many people don't have to file their income taxes until July 15th now, so there's a revenue shortfall for them there. We're not spending as much, so the income, beyond income taxes, there's the taxes on everything else, and so they're not getting consumer taxes. They're really predicting at local government, aid might go at the city level, they might be looking at unallotment at the, for schools, and for those of you that were on the board and experienced that, that is when they say there's no money left, the reserve is gone, and so therefore we are going to unallot some of the money, the school aid that we promised to the schools, and we'll pay you back later, which throws the schools into a cash flow borrowing situation. So I have to say that it's no one's fault, we're controlled by the virus, not, it's not like people are doing anything with malice in their heart, but I think the state is having financial issues, and I think because we're a creature of the legislature that we will probably have grave financial issues in the upcoming school year. So there are, we are not sure what's going on with any additional funds from the legislature, but it could be a year when we might even look at zeros. I don't know, Director Sonsrom, if you have anything else that you would add to that, but I would say it looks pretty bleak. Chair Severson, for any additional revenues coming in?
Yeah, no, I'm not, we weren't counting on any additional revenues. I don't think there will be any, but none of my counterparts think there will be. We think there will be more expenses due to COVID if it continues than maybe we've even estimated at the 300,000. Also, we've been doing cash flow runs, trying to figure out when and if we need to borrow.
One saving grace, and Denise has done a really nice job of predicting all of this, is that at the legislature this year, there is a persistent group, and Director Stunkel is one of them, that keeps reminding the legislature that it would be healthier for school districts if we could charge for childcare, and if we could start some of our own childcare programs, and that we are really, we're really encumbering a lot of debt by running free programs. And it seems like there's legislation up at the Capitol that might help us, but we're not sure if it can make it through both the House and the Senate, and then be signed by the governor. So that might be another glimmer of hope, but at this point in time, nothing has passed. So we'll just have to see when they adjourn, and I think they adjourn signee di, May 18th or 19th, one of those dates. So that will be unknown for us in about a week.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, I know you can't know the future, just like all of us, you know, it feels a lot of week to week, but I appreciate you guys building the room into the budget. And I know that comes at cost right now, right? It comes at real cost right now for the district, but, you know, much better than continuing to spend, spend when we could be looking at a couple more years of a big challenge to that balance fund. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Chair Severson, this is Lauren.
Thank you.
A couple of comments, I think, and, you know, this is, as we know, there's a couple of action items that are coming up here too, that are always a challenge for us as a board and for the district. And I think, you know, some of the things that Director Sonsrom has put together on this budget just helps us understand where we are financially in the district. And I would venture to say, you know, looking at the enrollment projections of a decrease of 50, you know, we just don't know at this point what's going to happen with enrollment with our community members, you know, if people have jobs that they can go back to, or if they don't have jobs, if they're working in restaurants or service fields, and when they can go back to work, or if they may have to leave this community to work elsewhere. There's still just a lot of unknowns. And, you know, we've got a financial responsibility to our taxpayers, as well as to our students and the programs and our teachers. I mean, there's a lot of, there's just a lot in play here. And, you know, obviously, the fund balance is not heading in the direction that we want it to go in. We're operating pretty leanly now, and it may even get more lean as we continue. And so I just want the community that's watching knowing that, you know, there are some tough decisions that have to be made, and it all comes down to where the dollars are, and where to best allocate those funds. And so I do appreciate Superintendent Kelly and Denise and everybody who's been working on this. And I will say, I don't, I mean, this is, this is not the end of this, and this is not the last budget we're going to see. And I hope that, you know, we can continue to grow the fund balance, but it's going to be, it's going to be a challenging year or two or more.
Any other questions or comments? Feel free to go ahead and make them. I have, you're all stacked at the top of my screen, so I'm kind of just scrolling through you.
I actually do have a question, this is Laura.
All right, thanks, Laura.
With regards to the different funds, community ed, I thought that was a, it had to be a self-supporting fund. Am I correct about that, or have some of the restrictions on fund balances been somewhat eased to help districts through this?
You're correct on that. It is self-supporting, it's usually funded by the fees that are raised for the programs that we put on. But now with the COVID, the Department of Ed issued some guidance or some leniency on using fund balances, so we can use some of our restricted fund balances to transfer to the other funds. Food service and community ed mainly is what the MD is anticipating we would use it for. But there's some caveats with that. We can't, we can't transfer funds that would increase our state aid if we did, or we can't transfer funds that would increase the tax bill. So there's very few of those restricted funds, and as you can see on this slide that I still have up, on the second line, that would be some of those in that 13 million of revenue, that 13,323. So we have to pick and choose which ones, if we do actually have funds, that we can use for that. I haven't looked at that very much yet, because we're waiting to get through the year. We have until the audit time to do those transfers, and then you would be asked to approve those with the audit probably.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that there has been a little bit of easing with that, because this is a very difficult situation. But I'm actually very pleased to see that, that at least we still have, although it's a sinking fund balance, it's still healthy by our board policy. So thank you very much. This has got to be an incredible amount of educated guesswork, and I do appreciate all the work that you put into this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions? All right, we will move on. That will be an action item then, at the next board meeting on the 26th then, correct?
Correct.
All right, we're going to move on to our board secretary, Don Hoyam, is going to talk about Board Book Premier subscriptions.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. In November, information was presented to you regarding upgrade in the Board Book Program used for formatting the school board agendas. The program we have used since 2020, excuse me, 2010, is being retired, and an upgrade is replacing it. This agreement for the replacement, the agreement that I'm going to ask you to sign is for replacement, any unused payment from our November invoice will be credited to our new invoice. This will be brought forward at a future meeting for approval.
Is there a significant cost adjustment on that, Don?
The cost will remain the same for the first year.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Oh, holla, holla, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so for the first year, it's going to be the same, but do we have an idea of how much is going to change after that?
Not at this point.
Isn't that how it works? All right, thankfully, we have had good luck with Board Book as a product, from what I've heard.
Yes.
All right, any other questions before we move on?
One point is that we do do a co-op through MSBA on this product.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the National School Board Association membership, and that is me. Let me get to the right tab here on my computer, so I make sure I'm telling you all the right things. So it is really time to reconsider our renewal of our National School Board Association affiliation membership dues for this coming school year 2021. Our pricing for last year was $4,165, and the fee would be the same this coming year. I know our discussion, if I'm remembering our discussion well, last year, we talked about making more use of our school board membership, that I think Laura and I had some really cool sites set on different seminars, we wanted to hear, different speakers we wanted to hear. So it's very unfortunate that our National School Board Association trip did get canceled right at the beginning of April. did get canceled right at the beginning of April. Does anyone have any questions, thoughts, concerns? Otherwise, we'll be asked at a future meeting to renew this for 2021. Lorian.
Yeah, not really a question, but just a comment. I think, I know this is something that even I brought up last year in terms of, you know, what's the best use of our dollars as a board. I, I will say, I think on a, on a personal note, that now more than ever, when times are uncertain, having membership in our, in our organizations that are pertinent to what we do are critical. You know, one, either for advocacy, but for knowledge and information and protocols and procedures. On a professional level, I'm tapping into my professional organizations and national organizations and using those memberships to help me, you know, through what I'm doing at my job related to COVID. And I think it's, at times when we're uncertain, we need to have the resources that are available to us. So I would continue to advocate for the membership.
Other thoughts or questions from folks? All right, yeah, on the same note, as Lauren, I would agree. I've seen some really helpful and good information coming out of some of the things that I know we're attached to, like the Minnesota School Board Association and the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, who both advocate for schools. And I think they have, especially MSD has that in with the state legislature that is very hard to accomplish. And, and so I think, yeah, for us, for our voices being heard in the midst of a lot of voices of, of different people and organizations in need. Any further questions before we move on to action items? All right, let's move on to our first action item, the Northeast Metro Agreement, Northeast Metro 916 Agreement, and Dr. John Thrive, our Special Education Director.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Administration, we're seeking board approval for Northeast Metro 916 and Columbia Heights Public Schools enter into an agreement for 916 to provide special education-related staffing services. These services range from nursing services, speech and language pathology, blind, visually impaired, and deaf or hard of hearing services, just to name a few. Additionally, Intermediate 916 provides a continuum of service for students who need additional support outside the regular school, and these services are provided in a setting for separate public day school. The agreement is for the purpose of, of getting Northeast Metro Intermediate 916 in providing special education and/or related staffing to students enrolled in Columbia Heights Public Schools. And this is a yearly agreement that we're asking for approval for. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Can we get a motion to move that forward?
Oh, move.
John, second?
Second.
Lorian, discussion? All right, for those of you watching, we did have a lengthy discussion about this. You can go back to our last school board meeting and watch that if you're interested in hearing more about District 916. I think hearing nobody's interest in further discussion, though. Molly, would you please do a roll call vote? Aye.
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 Louis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll go on to our next action item, which is the grading. We'll be, we're going to hear from the executive director, Zena Stenbeck, and Tara Tuckrell, and tell us more about our grading in the midst of all of this.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Director Tuckrell and I will be presenting an update on grading. So of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And this topic focuses or touches on all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Previously, the school board was, was provided with information that was the recommendation of administration for grading and also the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education. So we would like to review briefly some of that guidance and some of, and that recommendation. So of course, we're in a very unique situation currently. Luckily, we were able to get through much of the school year under normal circumstances. And just recently, I think it was mentioned in a previous presentation, that there's a lot of quick responding and reaction. And so the, the guidance, it feels like the guidance from the Department of Education comes slowly. You know, we're craving more guidance quicker. So with that, this guidance was just received recently, and very strong recommendations around ensuring an equitable grading system during the distant, during the, just the timeframe of distance learning. So we're just focusing right now on the end of the school year. So as you can see there, it is really important as part of the guidance from the Department of Education that we hold students harmless during this time. So as you can see, some of the factors, stress may impact students' performance, inequities may have been exacerbated during this time, and some of the students may have had to take on different responsibilities during distance learning. So additional guidance, as you can see, it's really a moment that we need to seriously consider punitive terms such as failure or unsatisfactory. And the recommendation from the Department of Education is that students should not be reported as a failure or retained, given an F during this unprecedented situation. So really, many of you may be hearing from the press conferences and the updates from either the Assistant Commissioner of Education or the Commissioner of Education around ensuring that we're providing equitable education during this time.
As the superintendent had mentioned at the beginning in her update, she talked about how we really are doing a lot of planning, even though we're still waiting for the guidance, we're doing a lot of planning before that. And grading was one area that we were doing planning as well as our distance learning. So we checked in with families, we checked in with students and staff in April to see how distance learning was going. We asked a lot of questions, we left it open for comments, we received a lot of surveys back, elementary all the way up through high school, including our early childhood. We received a lot back from them, too. And we use those surveys really to modify our district's distance learning plan. So on May 1st and May 4th, we did some professional development and really looked at those surveys to see how we could adapt the way that we are doing things to support our families and students more. And overall, the survey results really showed that the families and students were very appreciative. They were really appreciative of the staff and all that they're doing to connect with students and to continue their academics. Although we did notice a lot of barriers. A lot of students, as Zena had mentioned, are changing responsibilities, are having a hard time. A lot of our families are multilingual, so some of the academic pieces are difficult for them to support with. So we noticed a lot of those barriers mentioned in the surveys as well. Throughout the whole time in distance learning, the staff from Teaching and Learning has been partnering with Building Administration and really looking at how we can support staff during the time, as well as providing professional development and helping to create a distance learning forum where staff can give input. So we asked staff to give input on grading, we asked them for input on meeting with students, we asked them for input on a lot of different pieces, and we really used those comments that staff have given to modify our plan.
So just a reminder, the, the grading recommendations that the, that we're, that we're asking for approval this evening, and based on the guidance from the Department of Education, is really just looking at the distance learning period, so fourth quarter and the end of the school year. So students' grades that they've had previously in the school year that they were given, those will stay on the transcript as, as they have been in the past. None of that will change. And we also, this does, this recommendation does not apply to next school year either. At this point, we're, we're going to continue to wait for guidance. You know, we quickly had to establish a virtual online school. And so this is, again, one of those kinds of practices where we're, we're doing what we can in a really, really difficult situation and following the guidance that we've been given. But this does not apply to next school year.
So when working with our early childhood staff and looking at the data, we've decided to continue to give progress monitoring or progress information to families. Our staff in pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 all have used a TS Gold in the fall as well as the winter. So they're able to provide some assessment data and some progress data for families, but really focusing on the comments to support how things have been going during distance learning. The Minnesota Commission has, and Department of Education has waived our requirement for pre-K 4 exit data for the year, so we will not need to do the assessment piece of that. For elementary, we use a 1 through 4 system to show how students are doing with the Minnesota academic standards. So we will continue to use those 1 through 4 numbers as well as NA, which means not assessed. And we're going to be using our quarter 3 benchmarks. So we got into distance learning right, right before we finished quarter 3. So we had quite a bit of quarter 3 completed, but not everything. So we're going to use our quarter 3 expectations to give end of the year grades to students. And a lot of our teachers felt very good about this in terms of being able to support with data and information. And then any standards that were only covered during distance learning, we'll put an NA for, because it's really difficult to assess students equitably during this time. For secondary, working with both Columbia Academy and the high school, we feel we've come up with a system that really is equitable and follows the guidance in terms of not harming students, but also thinks about the future. As we think about colleges and we think about scholarships, yes, some colleges have said we're not going to look at it, but not everybody has. So we really don't want to harm any of our students with pieces that could happen in the future. So the final grades will consist of assignments and assessments from quarter 3, and any pieces from distance learning. And students will receive grades A through C or a P for pass. So as the guidance mentioned, not giving Fs or anything that could harm them, really focusing in on supporting students with their GPA with A through C, and then the P, they would still get the credit, but it would not alter their GPA.
As we've done this work during distance learning, both Director Tuckrell and I have been so impressed with the work that the staff has been doing to maintain learning during distance learning, and also the parents and all of the work that they're doing to support their children's learning at home, and the students themselves. We get to see a lot of the, the work that they're producing, and we're just really impressed. And people have really stepped up during this difficult time. In terms of communication, of course, this information would be communicated out in multiple modes. So whether it's Blackboard Connect or CSAT at the elementary level, also our district webpage would be updated. And it's been really important and crucial that we're communicating out more than ever in multiple languages, and so that would be part of the communication plan as well. And then one thing to note in terms of communication, particularly as Director Tuckrell mentioned, moving forward for any colleges or scholarship organizations looking at transcripts from, all the way from elementary, middle school, and high school, the paragraph at the bottom of the screen, we are required to, to put that and include that on grade reports. So you can see, it says, "Grades that are documented during the time period of March 16 through June 30 of 2020 reflect the distance learning period resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Future use of these grades for academic placement, admission, acceleration, remediation is discouraged and should be used with caution." So the student, the students or the organizations, anyone looking at that, or a school, next school year, well, it's just a really good reminder that the grades, the current grades for quarter 4 have been during distance learning. So this evening, we are here seeking approval to move forward with this temporary grading plan.
All right. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So move.
Molly, second?
Second.
John? All right, discussion?
I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Just clarification on this, the secondary, the middle school and the high school. You're going to be looking at third quarter grades, and is that where the A through C and the pass applies? Is that how that works?
It will count for their second semester grade, which is a combination of quarter 3 and the pieces that they've been doing during distance learning.
Okay, so they'll tie the two together?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
They always are. According to their GPAs, the two, each semester end grade is what counts into their GPA, not the quarter end grades.
I understand it, but when they talk about using quarter 3 at one point, that's, and you clarified my question, but I read it as if it was going to say quarter 3, and those are going to be your A through C and then, or a P, but they're still going to combine the distance learning grades as well. So, okay, thank you.
All right, Lorian.
Yeah, just a quick, a quick question. With, Zena, you had shown a slide that showed that the MDE had stated that, that there would be a grade or could be a grade of in-progress for any student who has not achieved mastery. How, how are we accounting for those students with our A through C and P grades? How are we providing the ongoing or continued support or documentation of students who have not achieved mastery and, and need some additional help or support to get there?
So the student support team has been, has been working with the school administration and the teachers to reach out to see what kinds of support students need. Our cultural liaisons are doing the same thing. And we are finding that there are a handful of students, and, you know, everyone is in particular concerned about the seniors and any high school, high school transcript, right? So the Director Tuckrell and I have worked with the high school administration, and the high school administration has identified a small, a very small number of students that, that may be a factor, right? And so when we met to discuss this, the high school has already a protocol and practice in place that takes precedence, that for those identified students who have really worked with their deans and worked with their counselors and have some significant, potentially significant barriers in life, they're, the high school's going to follow their, their regular practice and protocol, which would be, they would get it. Tara, is it an I or an IP, in-progress?
An I for in-progress.
I for in-progress. Thank you for those details. And then the deans and the high school administration have committed to working with those students to make sure that those pieces are worked on and turned in by those students.
So essentially, we're not going to give students a pass if they truly need, and not just our seniors, but our high school students in particular, or any of our students who are not, who still need help or support or skills to be able to academically perform next year. Because what I hate to see is students who are passing, who get a pass, who have not, you know, don't have the, the knowledge or the skills to then start school next year in their next level class, but are not then going to be successful because they weren't academically ready.
Right. So we're working on balancing the guidance from the Department of Education with, you know, really no failures and no, during this time, and, and the, the semester one grade will stand as is. But as we met with the high school administration, each dean and assistant principal and principal was on the Zoom call, and they were able to tell us the small number at each grade level that they have identified already that would normally fall into that category anyway. So since it's a past practice of allowing that in-progress period and grade, and then Director Tuckrell has checked with our folks on the tech side to see, to ensure that that's a possibility, too, that that could be listed, and then as that work is turned in and as the students are supported. In addition, however, we are having conversations for such students for how, how we can support them during the summertime, right? To ensure that their academics aren't slipping. We're waiting for guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education. In a sense, we're waiting, but in another sense, we're planning and preparing. And so as soon as we get the go-ahead, we'll be ready to be able to support students in the summertime as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional information, and I, I really do appreciate the dedication to, you know, our students who are needing those letter grades, whether it's for- you know, our students who are needing those letter grades, whether it's for programs or internships or colleges. And then, as you said, students who should be, need to be held harmless for the disparities in, in what is available to them during distance learning. And, and it seems like you've got a plan in place to account for the students who, who still need the additional help and support to get where they needed to be. So thank you for that.
All right. I believe Molly had a question. And then if anyone else, you can also raise your hand.
Yeah. Thank you. Can you hear me? Are you okay now? Is it so bad?
It's, it's not so bad. Keep talking.
Okay. I apologize. I kicked everyone in the house off the internet. I'm not sure what's going on. But first of all, thank you to the administration and staff that have been considering the effectiveness to the grading. I do appreciate seeing both the end of the spectrum. One specific question I have is in regards to the secondary level, specifically high school students. Hypothetically, there's a student, there's maybe her name like a 3.5 or a 4.0 GPA. Is there consideration being given? And have you identified and worked with those students to make sure? If they're in a situation where they're taking additional responsibility at home and now maybe getting a C is, are, are really giving that extra lenience and/or support around those students as well?
I can turn to, I think that's a great question because we really talked about that a lot with staff as well as administration. And Principal Robleski has an amazing team. That was the first question and answer that he gave us was if a student was at a 4.0 or all A's before, and we're noticing that drop, what are we doing? And his team really has stepped in to support, call, give any support they need through teachers. I've even talked to teachers and they've been saying the same thing that if they see that drop, they're trying to accommodate and support the student. So we're, as Xena mentioned before, holding the student harmless. We really are doing that in that same case. For a student who has barriers and was struggling before or not, we are supporting them with that. Xena, if you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, no, you, you said exactly, exactly it.
All right, Holla.
Yeah. So, um, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and it is a really difficult situation. And it's also hard to balance it with trying to honor the grades that the students are earning when they don't have as many barriers as others. But the main thing I'm wondering about right now is what's the criteria for a student getting a no pass or a pass? Since there is the AF grading in addition.
So our current system, we, if I'm understanding right, our current system actually does not have a no pass. So it's A through C or pass. And then there are some students, as mentioned earlier, that we are supporting that may need a little extra work or extra support to get the pass. So they might have an I in progress.
So when does a pass kick in instead of an AF?
So the students would have, it's A through C. Or yeah, so we're not giving the D or F.
Okay. So it's A, B, C, or a pass? And no Fs? Okay. So an F turns into a pass.
So students who are, students who are really demonstrating the struggles and particularly in multiple classes, that's where the deans and the AP and the principal have identified and, and will be getting an, an I and in progress for kids who are really significantly low in order to, to, or who are struggling with particular barriers, they'll be able to get that additional support. But yes, it's, it is a, it is a conundrum that we're working on and, and a challenge. It's just a whole different way of thinking how we're doing school and how we're finishing out the school year. But it was pretty clear from the guidance from the Department of Education, we heard it loud and clear. Hold kids harmless. They're just not recommending an F at this time. And again, it's just for a small time period.
Yeah, I, I definitely, definitely agree with that part wholeheartedly. It just, um, it, it is reassuring that they would get an in progress rather than a pass. Can stay honoring what the grades mean.
I think also, if I may, Columbia Heights High School is pretty unique in what, in the way that, in their approach to distance learning in that they're doing live lessons daily, that they're, that they're running a, a high school schedule. So the kids are really working hard and the, the teachers are working hard, staff is working hard. So, you know, they're not getting a small packet of work to do here and there. I mean, the kids are getting daily lessons and they're really learning and accomplishing academics. So we, we wanted to honor that.
I see that Molly left a comment. I'm going to read it because I don't know if the comments will be visible when this goes online. So I'll just go ahead and read it. It says, thanks Tara. That answers my question. I just wanted to ensure that our students who have GPAs of 3.5 to 4.0, for example, I think that's probably for, for an example, are being given additional support lenience during distance learning. If they have barriers at home and earning lower grades, that might be a C at this time. And so I would indicate that perhaps they've had additional responsibilities of childcare and other things in the home. And they are typically a higher performing students and they're now receiving a C. Will this impact, is there consideration given to that scenario?
And I would say this, this is something that's extending elementary, middle school and high school. And what I'm hearing and experiencing is the deans, assistant principals, principals, school social workers and teachers are making a lot of phone calls and having a lot of different type of communication and noticing when those things are happening. You know, if you've got a senior who's a 4.0 student and has been throughout their career and they're noticing when, when there's issues with their schoolwork or not turning pieces in and the administration, teachers, social workers and, and support staff are making those phone calls and reaching out to families and students to see how they can help and see what they need.
Okay. I appreciate that. Molly, can you give us a thumbs up if that kind of answers? All right. Thank you. Good job typing. Not a single typo that I noticed. Very good. Any other questions? Again, admittedly this meeting is getting very long, but we'll, we'll work crack a lac in. Okay. It looks like with no further questions, Molly, could you do a roll call vote, please? Type our names in if it's hard?
Madam Chair, would you like me to do that?
Molly, would, is that a, do we need a motion to change that or can you just do it? Have Don. Molly just texted me, have Don.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or is that just, it's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Don.
Yep. A Samurai?
Hi.
Larkin?
Hi.
Lewis? Lewis?
Thumbs up. We're going to count that as an I.
Thank you. Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We are going to now move on to item C, the calendar adjustment. I'm discussing a change of date for the graduation.
Madam Chair and School Board members, just like anything else with the pandemic, there's been a conundrum over what to do with graduation. And so therefore tonight, Principal Robleski and I would like to propose that for the class of 2020, that we move the date from May 28th to June 25th. And Principal Robleski will explain in a minute some of our thought processes on it. But I, I, for the people that are thinking, well, why would we move that date? Right now it would seem the guidance was late in coming from MDE. We received it last Thursday and the ability to pull off anything else besides a virtual would not be possible. And there seems to be some sentiment, both on the part of the superintendent, the principal, parents and students that we might and could do something better by the students. So I'm going to pass the baton to Principal Robleski to kind of talk a little bit more about the rationale. If you would, please, Dan.
Thank you Superintendent Kelly. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. During a pandemic and, and trying to present the best ceremony possible for the class of 2020 has been stressful, trying. And I'm going to be very transparent here. I want the board to know that our superintendent Kathy Kelly has gone above and beyond to do whatever is possible to make the best graduation ceremony for our seniors. Part of what has happened is some people might criticize the principal and the superintendent for not communicating out as plans as some schools have done earlier. But as you know, during a pandemic, things change not only by the hour, but by the minute. And there have been numerous hours, numerous plans in place to make the best graduation for our class of 2020. And the last thing that our superintendent is adamant about is to have a virtual graduation. And so there has been many plans in place, waiting for the guidance from the governor, Department of Education and, and public health that right now, the plans are out that a field or stadium graduation or an auditorium graduation is off the table. So in order to give us the gift of time, the superintendent and I are asking the board to move back the graduation to June 25th to see if we can make the plans for the best graduation possible with the times that we have right now and the parameters and guidance given by the government. Superintendent, did I miss something in this?
No, I, I don't, other than I, 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 I believe, Dan, you have been meeting with parents and you have talked to your senior class. And I think that they would, there's a preference not to have a virtual if possible, but to have some real world presence. Is that correct?
Yes. And with, with student class meetings, and I've been on with the parents on the senior class meeting, I believe last week it was. No one wants a virtual and people want some kind of a, either drive up, drive in, maybe a combination of both. I'm, I'm not, the planning is still going on. I, I want to make sure that we are following the guidelines presented to us before communicating out, because the last thing we want to do is communicate false information that we can't deliver on. So we, we have taken, taken what the students have asked and what the parents have asked for and what we, we have as parameters in hoping we can still present a gathering of some sort for our students.
If I might, having said that, I want to say, as I always have been saying lately, is that the virus controls the situation. We don't. And so we don't know what the governor is going to do with the stay at home, which is lifted or may not be lifted May 18th. And we really don't know what's going to be going on in June. But if more people are, if, if it lifts, we have more possibilities. However, I don't think that they're going to lift the guidance on the use of auditoriums, fields or stadiums. And it's, we are not the only school that is thinking about either June or July as the next best date, just to kind of see where we are with flattening the curve with the virus.
I, I think Superintendent, you said it quite well. I mean, we are, we are being driven by the pandemic.
Eric, can I suggest that we put it on the table with a motion and stuff?
Oh yes. Thank you, John. I didn't know if they were done. So can we get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Thanks, John. Second?
Second.
Holla? All right. Any discussion? John?
Thank you. Um, I just, a couple of points I want to make. Us as a board, it's our responsibility to adjust the calendars and things like that and then allow administration and the directors to come up with a plan that they think is see fit. I biased, I'm a parent of a senior, but in general, with everything that's gone and taken place, to have the gift of time, as Dan mentioned, to maybe they'll lift something, maybe they won't. But to plan something more than a virtual is going to take, I'm assuming a lot of work. Whatever the plan is they come up with, Dan's chuckling. So giving them the opportunity, it's, in my opinion, as a parent of a senior, it changes nothing waiting until June 28th to recognize them than May 28th. So I, I personally am in more than in favor of giving them the opportunity to work on putting something together.
Are there other thoughts?
Uh, yes, this is Laura.
Thanks Laura.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I, I think that the, the giving the, giving the gift of time to be able to, to be able to put together something more than a virtual ceremony is, is a very wise decision. And I'm really glad to see, see this on the agenda. In addition to that, I will guarantee that this will be an incredibly memorable graduation ceremony because it's never happened like this before. So it will definitely be groundbreaking and, and I again, look forward to this graduation every single year. But I think we're going to have an awful lot to, to reminisce about in the future. So the kids are going to get quite an experience. Thank you for all the hard work.
Other thoughts? All right. Thank you so much for that hard work and, and keeping the ball moving forward. I know that you've been doing your best to be diligent and I just want to reiterate that for anyone who's watching, how you guys are balancing being, I think Xena said it, we're planning and preparing. So it's not like nothing's happening beside, behind the scenes, but then we do need to wait for guidance and guidelines to decide which of those plans can be activated. So I think that's to your credit. And I know that's a lot of extra work because you're making different plans and then having to navigate the difficult road of, of the guidelines. So I appreciate that. Let's have a roll call vote on this. Molly thinks she's got this back. So here we go. Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
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 Sir?
I think it was me. Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now, yes.
I just didn't want Dan to run away. I know you're going to move on to the next item. Well, this, I, I, and it's, my comments are directed to the board, my fellow board members, but I wanted Dan to hear it as well. Now that they have this opportunity to do this and obviously it's going to get out there that we're looking at doing something different. I fully suspect, I know because of Boris' experience that people are going to have lots of ideas, lots of suggestions and expectations as to what they would like to see. As a board member myself, I'm placing my confidence in administration and the superintendent to be taking into account all of the things that come into the play. Because staffing is going to be an issue, the people that they need to do the graduation. If they do the drive-in, it's going to be this, if it's the drive-by, whatever they choose to do. So a, as much as I encourage people to provide input and suggestions as a board, you know, just a reminder to us that they are way more intricately involved than what we can, what we cannot do. So best of luck, make it a good one. But just again, as board members, let's, I would encourage us to, to stay strong and support that.
Good work, John. Thank you.
Just, just one comment. Thank you for that. I just, I just want you to know that. I just, I just want you to know that everybody on this screen, we're all in the kid business, and the last thing we want is, at Columbia Heights High School, the last thing we want is a virtual graduation, and, you know, Superintendent Kelly, I think we all want the kids to go out with a bang. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thanks so much, Dan. Thanks for hanging on for this epic meeting. We are going to move on to action item E. Hold on, I'm jockeying between documents. The discontinuation or reduction of positions for the 2020-2021 resolution. So Lindsay, I don't know if you, before I read it, would you like to say anything?
Yes, please. Chair Saverson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight I'm here, there's going to be seven resolutions total. And just a reminder that at the January 28th school board meeting, the school board did adopt a resolution that directed the superintendent and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions, in order to balance the school district budget. So the first resolution tonight is the resolution discontinuing and reducing total positions for 2020-2021, and the recommended budget adjustments and efficiencies are on the enclosed resolution. And so tonight I'm here seeking approval.
I'm going to read the motion, and then I'll get a motion to carry it forward. Read the resolution, we'll get a motion to carry it forward. It says, "Resolution: Discontinuing and reducing positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 13 adopted a resolution on January 28th, 2020, directing the administration to make recommendations for reduction in programs and positions, and whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. The following positions or portions thereof be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes, and department efficiencies. 11.465 FTE net license, nonelementary positions. Point 1.0025 FTE net Columbia Academy license and nonlicense position. Point 167 FTE net high school license and nonlicense position. 8.15625 FTE net district-wide license and nonlicense position. All teacher positions with their Tier 1 license, Tier 2 licensure, expiration of 3 or 63020 or out-of-field permission licensure by law need to renew. All teacher positions that were one-year contract, long-term substitute positions, all positions cut for performance, adventure club, and mini-adventure club staff based on program suspension." The motion for adoption of the following resolution, well, that's where I ask, can I get, can I have a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
I heard Laura.
Yes.
Second.
Second, from Lorian. All right, thank you. Discussion.
I actually have a question.
Lorian, you're next.
Okay. With regards to the difficulty with being able to renew licenses, is that taken into consideration for the, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this, when a license has lapsed, but we're discontinuing that program because of a lapse in license, do we have any direction on whether or not we can do that?
I guess if I understand the question correctly, the licenses that we would be, nonrenewing
a position for would be, the Pelsby has Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, Tier 4, and Tier 1 license is, I have a four-year degree, and they're going to give me a license for the year. So we'd have to work with Pelsby on that. These are not your license that are Tier 3 or 4, which are pretty much most of our staff. It would be this staff that just got a one- or two-year license from the Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
So we'd have to work with them through this process, and we have to usually reapply for the licensure on their behalf.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Lorian.
Yeah, I think as Lindsay said, I mean, there are seven resolutions that we're going to look at tonight, and I don't, I don't want to say something in each one. So I guess I'll say something at this first one, and I know we've talked about this before. Couple of things. One is, several of these are what I'll call housekeeping, or things that we take care of or do this time every year that we need to do. We had a presentation earlier on what our budget situation looks like, and in addition to the direction that we give the superintendent and the administration on a regular basis, annual basis, to look for efficiencies so that we can operate within our budgetary means, you know, we're here. In addition to that, we've got some, really some additional constraints that hit us financially as well, and still, like we mentioned earlier, a lot of unknowns to come. Yet at the same time, we've got the fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the district is operating within its budget, within the revenues that we have. And at the same time, looking at the class sizes and maintaining those to expectations, and the programs, and the experiences that we're giving the students, and all of that comes together to where we're at today. And I think, you know, taking a look at where we're going to go with these next seven resolutions, knowing that everything was done possible to make sure that our kids, our students at Columbia Heights Public Schools are receiving the best education, that we're financially operating responsibly, and having to provide some, you know, either permanent or temporary staffing changes due to programs, or things that we're not allowed to continue due to the pandemic, all of that's coming down right now. And I just want the public who may be watching this know that we don't take this lightly, this is never easy to do, and a lot of care and consideration was put into this.
All right, other comments? I think I just, I think probably the sentiment is, you know, this is always tough. We care deeply about our staff and this Columbia Heights family, and so this is never easy. It's certainly not easier for the administrators who are making some of these calls, and certainly not for the individuals who are impacted by this, or their coworkers, and we understand that. So having said that, I would like to move this forward for a roll call vote, as it is a resolution. Molly, do you feel good about it?
Yeah.
All right, let's give it a whirl.
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
F. S. M. R. I.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to the next resolution. Resolution relating to the termination and nonrenewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers. Lindsay, do you have anything to say before we jump in on that?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is the termination, nonrenewal of probationary teacher contracts. Included in the list are those for either discontinuance of positions, performance, does include licensure, and those are on a one-year, long-term substitute contract. So tonight we're here seeking approval.
All right, I'm going to read the, once again, I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'm asked for a motion moving forward. Whereas the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13, see list below, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 13, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page 2 of this resolution, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of current 2019-2020 school year. Be it further resolved that written notice will be sent to said teachers regarding termination and nonrenewal of his or her contract as provided by law. And that said, notice shall be in substantially the following form. It will look like a notice of renewal and nonrenewal, it will be addressed to the particular recipient, and it would say, "You are hereby notified that a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 held on May 20th, 2020, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the current school year and to not renew your contract for the 2020-21 school year. Said action of board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5. The motion for adoption of the forego, then here's where I ask for the motion again, and then it'll keep going, and it says, "In the following voted that wherein the resolution was duly passed," and then we would, obviously, the employees listed below. So can I have a motion to move that forward? Molly? Second?
Second.
Holla, I saw Holla. Holla did the hand. All right, discussion. All right, roll call vote, please.
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
F. S. M. R. I.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Going to move on to the next one, which is a resolution placing tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Lindsay?
So in March, the board did, was presented with and approved a resolution, it was proposed placement of a tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence. This is only for a portion of the staff members FT that's over 1.0, and she had 14 days in which to request a hearing, and the teacher did not request a hearing. So tonight I'm here with the final resolution, placing this teacher for a portion of the FT on unrequested leave of absence.
All right, and I will go ahead and read that resolution and then ask for a motion. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 adopted a resolution proposing to place the teacher listed below on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, if applicable, effective at the end of the 2019-20 school year pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 7, and Article 5, Section 8 of the current master agreement between the school district and the executive representative. This, the following, the employee listed, whereas written notice of their proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence was personally served on the above-named teacher, and whereas the written notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence set forth the grounds for the proposed placement, as well as a statement that the teacher was entitled to a hearing on their proposed placement on unrequested leave if they made a written request for hearing within 14 days receipt of the notice, and whereas the named teacher did not request a hearing on her proposed placement on unrequested leave, thus acquiescing the school board's proposed action. And now therefore be it resolved that the employee is being placed on an unrequested leave of absence to the extent indicated in parentheses from Columbia Heights School District Independent School District Number 13, effective at the end of the year 2019-2020 school year pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 7, and Article 5, Section 8 of the current master agreement between the school district and executive representatives on the grounds of financial limitation, lack of pupils, and discontinuance of position. Two, the notice of placement on unrequested leave of absence, together with a copy of the motion, is either personally served or sent by certified mail, return receipt requested to the named teacher. That copy of the notice, resolution, and affidavit of service be placed on the teacher, above-named teacher's personnel file. So can I get a motion to carry that one forward?
So moved.
John, second?
Second.
Lorian, discussion?
Chair Saverson, just one note on this one. I think as Director Bennett said, this is just the overage of beyond the one FTE, and it's a .025 FTE of this position.
Yep, .025 FTE. Thank you, Lorian. Any other discussion? All right, no further discussion. Molly, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
S. R. I.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item G. Lindsay, did you have any thing to say on this one?
I was just going to say that the fourth resolution that pertains to the nonrenewal of an employment contract of a probationary administrator, so we just need approval of this resolution.
All right, I'm going to read it, and then we'll go ahead. Whereas the, it says, "Resolution relating to the termination and nonrenewal of the contracts of probationary administrative employees. Whereas the following individuals are probationary assistant principals in Independent School District Number 13, see list below, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, the contract of said person listed on page 2 of this resolution in Independent School District Number 13 is hereby terminated and not renewed, effective on the last day of school for the 2019-2020 school year. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said probationary assistant principal regarding termination and nonrenewal of their contracts as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially in the following form, and it's a letter addressed to the recipient. You are hereby notified that a regular school board meeting of School Board of Independent School District Number 13 held on May 12, 2020, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the current school year and to not renew your contract for the 2021 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5," and I will, oh, and then again, listed below. All right, could we get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Uh, we got a, we got a motion from Lorian, and a second from Laura. Any discussion? All right, Molly, could we get a roll call on that one, please?
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Aye.
F. S. M. R. I. Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to item H, I think, is that where we are? Yep, "Termination of Positions Resolution."
So again, the fifth resolution is to terminate, eliminate, or reduce nonaffiliated positions for the 2020-2021 school year. So again, seeking approval of this resolution.
All right, once again, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the following positions are employees in Independent School District Number 13 as listed below, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that those persons or positions listed above in Independent School District 13 are hereby terminated, eliminated, or reduced at the close of the current 2019-2020 school year, or on date otherwise noted. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to aid employees regarding termination, elimination, or reduction. Can I get a motion to move this one forward, please?
Move.
Molly? Second?
Second.
John? Discussion? All right, Molly, can we do another roll call, please?
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
S. R. I.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moving on to item I, "Resolution relating to the reduction of mini-adventure club of community education staff." Lindsay?
So the sixth resolution pertains to mini-adventures program, which is the year-round childcare program for three-to-five-year-olds, and it is being temporarily suspended, so therefore the positions and the staff in these programs are being reduced. So tonight I'm here seeking approval of the reduction of staff listed in this resolution.
All right, I'll read this one again now. It says, "Whereas the employees listed below in Independent School District Number 13, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that those persons listed above in the Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated effective June 12, 2020. The positions are full for full-time, part-time, and substitute positions. Be it resolved that written notice be sent to said employees regarding the reduction of position." Could I please get a motion to carry this one forward?
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
John, all right, any discussion on this one? All right, Molly, can we get another vote, please?
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
S. M. R.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries, and we will move on to the next resolution, which is relating to the reduction of adventure club community education staff.
So the final resolution is the adventure club program, which is school-age programming, and that program is being temporarily suspended. So therefore the positions in this program and staff are being reduced. So tonight I'm here seeking approval of the resolution of staff listed in this resolution.
I'm gonna read this one. Whereas the employees listed below in Independent School District Number 13, be it resolved by the Independent School Board, by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that those persons listed above in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated effective May 28th, 2020. The positions are for full-time, part-time, and substitute positions. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said employees regarding the reduction of their position. Can I get a motion to carry this one forward? Molly? Ha, second?
Second.
Holla? Lorian, Lorian, we'll go Lorian. All right, any discussion on this one? All right, Molly, if we could get another roll call, please?
Chief President.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
S. M. R.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries, and we'll move on to the last action item tonight, which is something we discussed a couple of weeks ago when we met, and that is to add a school board listening session to our 2019, 2020 calendar. Can we get a motion to carry that one forward?
So moved.
John, second? Molly, second? Is that a, did I get a hand raised on that, Molly? All right, okay, discussion. Go ahead, Lorian.
Yeah, just a, a comment. I think we had talked about this previously about potentially adding, you know, one or two sessions. I think I would advocate for, at this point, adding one. Seeing how it goes, seeing what participation is, and then if we need to, we can always put another action item on the agenda to do more. But my recommendation would be to do one at this point to see if it works.
What are some other thoughts from other board members on that?
I agree, that makes sense.
Thanks, all. Other, other folks? If you guys are comfortable with this, perhaps I will move to ask you to report to Superintendent Kelly if you're interested in being a part of this. And from there, if you're comfortable, I'll appoint two representatives from our team to be in that that listening session, as we don't wanna violate any rules of quorum. So just like a normal listening session, we would stick to two people. But if you would send word through Captain Superintendent Kelly, if you're interested, that can get back to me in the Friday report, and if you're comfortable, I can work with people to, to pick a date based on who is selected. Aiming for sometime next week would be my goal. Would everyone be comfortable with that? Lorian?
I don't, I, I guess, are you saying that you'd have the listening session to be sometime next week?
If possible. Do you think that's rushing it, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to give enough notice to the public.
Okay.
So if we're not getting back to you and it's not coming out until Friday, then we're looking at like early next week to solidify. So I would say we'd have to look at the week after.
All right, any other comments on that? Are you guys comfortable with moving it out to the subsequent week?
Yes, that's, that sounds really like a wise idea. Thank you, Lorian.
Okay, and then we will also work with, probably with Director Stonecall on how to communicate this best with the public. Thanks. I got a big smile. Thank you, Kristen. And recently, happy birthday to you, Kristen. All right, if you guys are comfortable with that, why don't you give word to Superintendent Kathy Kelly? And you can send her an email or shoot her a text and let her know your thoughts, and then we'll go from there. So can, Molly, can we get a motion to approve adding this to our current listening session calendar? So can we get a vote on that? Sorry, we already had a motion.
You have a motion? I couldn't remember.
Yeah, we did. We did, didn't we, Don?
Yes.
Thanks. Lot of motions. All right, we'll do a vote. Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
S. M. R.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to board topics, and thank you for hanging in there with us, everyone. Moving on to board topics. Oh, Lorian, sorry, I'm toggling between documents.
Yep, you're good. I just wanted to remind people to fill out their census.
Oh. Yes, thank you. Also, academic awards night, should this get on the air? I'm not exactly sure. Witness Hoppsup is gonna be, there's gonna be a link set to the video sent out at seven o'clock tomorrow night, which would be Wednesday night. So people can participate in academic awards night. I'm assuming the link will remain so people can watch it at subsequent times. Is that true? Cause it's a pre-recorded video, yes? Will the link be up for a while? We know? Need a high school staff member?
Unclear at this time.
Unclear at this time. All right, thank you. That is a fair answer. I appreciate that. You can't know everything, I'll tell you that. All right, any other board topics? All right, hearing none. We will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.